Una cosa en la que creo es mantener nuestras alquileres limpias y parecidas, porque cuando tus alquileres parecen mejores y vas por el patio de la calle y es una experiencia más agradable, hay un componente físico y espiritual en eso. Realmente necesitamos cuidar de nuestros derechos públicos, porque estos son nuestros catedrals colectivos.
Estamos haciendo algunas cosas muy buenas en la comunidad de Echo Park hoy. El próximo mes...
Aquí en Echo Park estamos haciendo limpias, estamos recogiendo productos sobresalientes, estamos pintando graffiti... Y estamos abriendo puertas informando a los concejales de los recursos de la ciudad que están disponibles para ellos gratis. Y luego me encuentro con más gente que represento y es algo bueno. Entonces, cuando estaba corriendo por este oficio, campañando en 2013, abrí miles de puertas preguntando algo de los concejales. Así que desde ser en un oficio, me gusta al menos una vez al mes ir de puerta a puerta ofreciendo algo a los concejales para que no sientan que tienen que venir a la Cámara de Ciudad o a mi oficina de campo, ni siquiera llamarnos. Así que es solo un gesto que me gusta ofrecer a los concejales que estoy en contacto, estoy en el terreno, estoy en las alquileres todo el tiempo.
Tienen que saber que no tenemos ninguna ayuda aquí.
¿Lo haces ahora? Vamos, lo haces ahora.
Gracias, realmente aprecio. Realmente aprecio a la persona porque tomó el tiempo de visitarnos. Nunca tenemos a nadie que venga a cuidarnos.
Hola, soy Miko Ferrell, soy miembro del consejo. Es por eso que amo lo que hago, porque amo conectar con la gente, la política es la gente. Y así me fortifica, me fortifica, me da más resolución. Remueve completamente el abstracto, porque es el contacto humano con el humano. Y de ahí no hay una fuerza más poderosa. Puedes hablar de lado y de atrás, las redes sociales son inadecuadas. Pero el contacto personal es donde está. Y ahí es cuando realmente llegas a la fuente de cómo la gente se siente y lo que quieren.
La alquiler necesita eso. No hemos tenido una limpieza en un tiempo. Agradecemos la ayuda.
Ahora, alguien que siempre está aquí como parte de todos estos eventos con su brocha cada mes. Aaron, ¿te alejarías?
Este arte es tan texturizado que casi puedes sentirlo solo mirándolo. Por más de cuatro décadas, un negocio de familia ha creado este efecto 3D para renombrados clientes. Y como informa Gil Reyes, las mejores de esas obras están ahora en show.
Saltando de la página imprimida son estas artes de tres dimensiones handicapped. Mixografía en el sur de Los Ángeles afirma ser la única tienda de imprimiación en el mundo para perfectar esta técnica. En show están décadas de resultados en un exhibe sobre la figura humana.
Desde lo más tradicional hasta lo más conceptual o contemporáneo.
El jefe y operador Chiremba nos están mostrando algunas de las mejores de las mejores obras que su empresa de familia ayudó a crear durante los últimos 45 años. Este exhibe se llama Faces. Nota cuántas de las obras te saltan directamente.
Imágenes de tres dimensiones en papel handmade. Eso es lo único.
Añadiendo textura a las imágenes de renombrados artistas contemporáneos, John Boltisari.
Para hacerlo aún más interesante.
Hace más curiosidad.
Y más... sí.
El método 3D también crea sombras naturales, reflejando las características de los trabajos de Alex Israel, que detallan el estilo estereotipal soCal.
El sol, los ojos, ya sabes.
El escudo estilizado.
El estilo, básicamente trabaja, es de L.A. y todo su arte refleja eso.
La familia Remba perfectó el método de imprimiación 3D en su estudio original en la Ciudad de México antes de llevarlo a clientes de artistas en Estados Unidos. Visita Faces, ese es el exhibe de imprimiación 3D en Mixografía en 1419 East Adams Boulevard en la sección central Alameda de el sur de Los Ángeles. La admisión es gratis.
Y tienes mucho tiempo para visitarlo. El exhibe continúa hasta el 9 de marzo. Para más información visita mixografia.com. Los perros no son solo caros y amables, pero también están todo el grito en este año lunar. Anna Marcos desea conocer algunas de ellas, incluyendo algunas especies endangeradas y por qué están en show en el Zoo de Los Ángeles.
Solo mira ese mugazo amigable. Los perros están en frente y en medio en el Zoo de Los Ángeles mientras celebra el año lunar chino. Y este año empieza con un poco de ruido. Es el año del perro. Nuestra primera parada en la tour del Zoo, los perros de pato de vientre vietnam, Petunia y Pua.
Siempre ves los de la película y dices, oh, probablemente no sea tan cool en la vida real o algo así, pero son hermosos. Los perros de pato son en realidad muy inteligentes y sociales. Algunas personas piensan que son más inteligentes que los perros. ¿Qué pensáis de estos perros?
Sean como si saltaran de la puerta.
Pero a veces...
Son gordos.
Son gordos. Eso es buena suerte, aunque...
Según el zodiaco chino, una cara de perro linda es un signo de buena suerte y riqueza, así que espero que se me deshaga.
¡Es genial! ¿Qué harán con esas mejillas, eh?
Pero no es todo diversión y juegos aquí. El Zoo de Los Ángeles tiene una educación y conciencia de conservación también. Ambos el babirusa y el perro rojo son especies vulnerables debido a la destrucción de su entorno.
El perro rojo puede vivir en grupos de hasta 20, solo muestra cómo social son. Los babirusas también se llaman perro de perro. Y si los miras, puedes ver por qué tienen las piernas más largas y pueden correr muy bien.
Bueno, uno de los perros de perro corrió muy bien, el otro, sus tusos eran un poco cargados. Y este viseño mordisco no es realmente tan lleno de mordos.
Los hombres tienen algunos mordos en sus caras, las mujeres no. Así que no están cubiertos de mordos, como quizás su nombre sugiere.
Con una nota más seria, esto es una especie críticamente endangerada, cerca de extinta en su hogar nativo, las Filipinas.
Se amenazan principalmente con la caza y la fragmentación de su entorno.
El año del perro podría traer algo de riqueza y buena suerte, pero solo si algunas de estas perros siguen por ahí. Soy Anna Marcos de LA esta semana.
Mientras estamos en el tema de los animales adorables, ahora vamos a la galería Cats on Glass, una galería interactiva que da a los amantes de perros la oportunidad perfecta de jugar y, con suerte, adoptar uno.
Estamos en la galería Cats on Glass en el centro de Los Ángeles. Debujamos el evento en Nueva York el año pasado y estamos muy emocionadas por llevarlo a Los Ángeles, donde hay una tanta comunidad de perros robusta. Creo que llamarías a Cats on Glass un poco de todo. Es parte de exhibe de arte, es parte de lounge de adopción y, honestamente, es todo fabuloso. Nuestro exhibe de interés es un gigante de juego de plástico donde puedes ver perros desde arriba, desde una perspectiva fresca. Cuando visitas la galería Cats on Glass, cada perro que ves, ya sea en el gigante de juego de plástico o en nuestro lounge de adopción, está listo para ir a casa.
Vine aquí a ver perros en plástico, pero terminé adoptando un perro, no muy sorprendida.
Fresh Step tiene una misión de ayudar a cada perro de alquiler a encontrar un hogar para siempre, así que trajeron este evento a LA para brillar realmente el lujo en los perros de alquiler para promover más adopciones de perros.
Su nombre era Sand cuando lo compré. En realidad lo renombré, su nombre es ahora Luca Lamoncello. Todos mis perros son nombrados después de las ciudades italianas, así que él también ahora.
Tenemos perros que te seguirán, como los perros, tenemos perros que quizás sean un poco más típicos de tu perro típico o lo que crees que es un perro típico y se esconden, pero los perros, como las personas, vienen de todos los tipos de personalidades, formas, tamaños y siempre hay un perro para ti.
Esto es un pop-up con un propósito. Sabes, creo que es realmente increíble que las personas que ponen esto realmente quieran que cada perro encuentre un nuevo hogar.
Si vas a spcial.com, puedes ver todos nuestros perros adoptables maravillosos y los tenemos todo el año. Y realmente apreciamos a socios como Fresh Step, porque somos una agencia sin fines de lucro, no hay SPCA nacional o Human Society.
Lo valió, es increíble.
Juntos con la SPCA LA, Cats on Glass encontró hogares para 113 perros afortunados. Los alquileres en Chinatown aprenden sobre sus derechos, líderes de la ciudad expanden la Fuerza de Tráfico Humano y una casa abierta para servicios de señores. Todo esto en City View. El consejo Distrito 1 organizó un taller de derechos de alquiler para residentes de la comunidad de Chinatown. Recientemente, los ciudadanos mayores han recibido avisos de aumento de alquiler y el taller pretende educar a los alquileres y alquileristas de sus derechos y responsabilidades bajo la ley de alquiler.
Estamos aquí para proporcionar servicios gratis para ellos, para asegurarse de que sepan sus derechos.
Después del éxito de su rechazo a la violación de tráfico humano en el valle de San Fernando, el Consejo de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles y la LAPD ahora aplicarán esa estrategia a las áreas de prostitución en los sur de Los Ángeles. Expandiendo su foco para incluir pimpos y joncs, el rechazo ha hecho un progreso significativo en la fundación del comercio de sexo local. Y fue divertido para los señores en Montecito Heights quienes asistieron a una reciente casa abierta. El evento contó con una banda en vivo, comida catering y información sobre los recursos orientados a los señores locales. El menudo es la combinación perfecta de ingredientes que ha estado trayendo a las familias y a las comunidades juntas por generaciones. Te llevamos a Plaza de la Raza para un試尝of National Menudo Month.
Estamos celebrando el Menudo Month, es el Menudo Month nacional, así que enero es el día en que celebramos el menudo. Tratamos de comerlo e incentivamos a la gente a saberlo a través del mes de enero.
Fui invitada a probar un bonito menudo, porque lo amo tanto.
Como latinas aquí en LA, amamos la cocina mexicana y qué mejor manera de comerlo. Posole menudo con la familia. Traje a mi madre, traje a mi hija, traje a mi hijo. Es domingo y es una gran manera de celebrar nuestra cultura y la gran cocina mexicana.
长大后 listening a mariachi music and my mom, since i was a little kid, i was three years old teaching me how to sing mariachi, be listening to mariachi, it was something that we grew up with and that's something i carry on with me. It's very important for the parents to be doing this, for our music not to die and passing that on to our children.
Es algo que ha estado en la vida de nuestros ancestros durante años. Es un menú muy tradicional, es algo que generalmente se hace para festividades y eventos y es realmente importante, es sobre tradición y familia. El menudo es un tipo de reunió.
Disfruta de una especial tributo de obras raramente realizadas de algunos de los mejores performantes de LA. Descubre el mundo en un fin de semana, todo bajo un arco y celebre la cultura africana, las artes y más durante un festival de calle de la historia negra. Todo esto y cosas que hacer. Escucha, amantes de la música, Compose LA presenta So Far So Good, la última lección de música que está sucediendo en el World Stage en Lamert Park. Unirse a Dwight Tribble y el Premio Grammy de James H. Leary para un programa explorando la tributo de flujo libre. Inicia el ritmo de Compose LA, domingo 17 de febrero, a partir de 3:00 p.m. El World Stage está ubicado en 4321 Degnan Boulevard. Para más información visita theworldstage.org/events. Planear tu siguiente destino exótico, entonces tu primera parada debería ser la Show de Viajes y Aventuras de LA. Explora innumerables opciones de vacaciones, planifica viajes con expertos de viajes en el sitio y disfruta de descuentos exclusivos, show only, donaciones y regalos. Todo está esperando para ti en la Show de Viajes y Aventuras de LA 2019 sucediendo el 16 y 17 de febrero en el Centro de Convenciones de LA en los salones G, H y J. El Centro de Convenciones está ubicado en 1201 South Figueroa Street. Para más visita travleshows.com. La ciudad de Lamert Park es el lugar del Festival de calle cultural de la historia negra. Este evento gratuito acoge a las familias y a los miembros de la comunidad para aprender sobre la cultura africana, las artes, la música y más. Las festividades comienzan el domingo 17 de febrero, a partir de 11:00 a.m. El evento está organizado por Lamert Park Rastas, ubicado en 43rd Place y Degnan Boulevard. Para más información visita ijahken.org. Y eso es un mirar a algunas cosas que hacer. Eso es todo para esta edición. Soy Yana Kay. De todos nosotros aquí en LA esta semana, gracias por acompañarnos. Un recordatorio de que puedes vernos en línea en lacityview.org. También estamos en Facebook, Twitter y YouTube. Nos vemos la próxima vez para más de LA esta semana.
Hola, soy Gina Ray y este es mi perro Whippet. Somos de Winnetka. ¡Míralo, chica! Estás viendo LA City View, canal 35. Esta es nuestra ciudad y nuestro canal.
Good morning, good morning. Everyone, please take your seats. I want to welcome you to City Hall. Today is February 12th. It's a Tuesday. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, if you please call a roll.
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weezar, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson, thirteen members present and accord, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval in the minutes.
Mr. Harris Dawson moves. Mr. Price seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Mr. Rue moves, and Mr. Buscaino seconds, next.
Mr. President, today's Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Let's be it. Let's all rise. We'll be led today by Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Let's continue with the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Items one through three are items noticed for public hearing. And, Mr. President, there are cards on all three items, sir.
Okay, then, let's continue.
Items four through eight are items for which public hearings have not been held. Mr. President, there is a request to hold item four and five.
Okay, let's do that, and we'll vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Please continue. Mr. Rue?
Sorry about that, Mr. President. Could I hold item number seven?
We need to vote on reconsideration on item seven. So that's what's before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, we'll hold that. Continue.
Items nine through thirty-one are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, sir.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, sir. There is a request to hold item thirty, and there are cards on all items except for item twenty-nine, sir.
Okay, let's vote on twenty-nine. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Okay, Sergeant, I want to try to do something real quickly, if I can. Mr. Previn, if you'd please come forward. Items one through three, fifteen through thirty-one. And then your general public comment. Go ahead.
We're going to try something a little different, sir, because I was just retrieved an agenda from the clerk's office. So there are none in the meeting. There's one hundred and fifty or five hundred people here, and we don't have any paper meeting agenda. Shaun is...
Mr. Previn, speak to the items. Mr. Previn, speak to the items.
Sure. I'll leave your TFR hearings alone for a moment and talk about the liquor licenses. You know, they have an item on the County Board of Supervisors where drunk driving incidents are going to cost a lot of money. And what we should be doing is thinking about ways to get the word out. In my neighborhood, we're doing a lot of enforcement. I don't know. You know, we've increased the speed limits in areas where there are kids and recreationists by five miles an hour so that we can enforce against people. I just feel like Bonin is trying, but all he's busy doing in transportation is restricting parking for ordinary residents all over the place. If you look at their agendas, they never make it down here because you got rid of them now. It's astonishing, sir. They're just eating up all the neighborhoods with no parking, restrictions on parking, oversized parking. You have a homeless crisis, sir. You have to find some solution. I know Corretts is fighting to get fur banned in town, and O'Farrell is working diligently to get the NRA. By the way, that one does not pass muster.
Which item are you on?
Sure. It's the one that O'Farrell, who is a very, very diligent, pernicious finer himself, came up with a great idea, sir, which was to make anybody who wants to do business with the city of L.A. have to disclose if they have any affiliations. So they're scanning for affiliations.
So, Mr. Previn, we actually already satisfied public hearing on that?
Well, I know you satisfied yourself, sir, but we're being sued.
Mr. Previn, speak to the items.
I would suggest that's a substantial change. We're being sued.
I would suggest, at this point, let's give Mr. Previn his one minute for general public comment.
Let the record reflect, we are being sued.
Okay, now you're on general public comments. You can talk about whatever you like.
Well, it's very hard, because I had many items that I wanted to pull. I'm supportive of a lot of the work that you're doing down here, but you don't let the people speak on it. So now, what we have is six hundred thousand dollars being set aside by Greg Smith, the guy from out there, to get Myers-Nave, that's your inside law firm, who spent, we spent over a million dollars fighting against decorum, because I know you have decorum issues down here. And that very same firm is going to fight to have two hundred thousand trucks drive dirt that many people say you'll never win the fight, and the dirt shouldn't be moved because it's as dangerous as other dirt. It is a place where they did some stuff in the past, but it's a big rev-up lawsuit at the taxpayers' expense, sir. We don't want it. We don't want that. We don't want trucks driven through the valley and all that. It's Greg Smith. He shouldn't be sitting there. We should be having Stephanie Uy, who is the new leader from CD-12, because she's a woman. We don't want to reappoint with older gentlemen people as we try to repopulate this with what reflects America today, which is women voices.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. If I could get Mr. Murphy and Madam Clerk and Mr. City Attorney. He will be the last multi-speaker of today. That'll conclude that. Mr. Murphy, you have items one, two, three, nine, and ten through twenty-six.
Item one, supporting. Item ten, I am supporting. Give me my general pub comment.
Give him his one minute for general public comment.
Sir, what the hell happened to the paper agendas? I mean, this is ridiculous. We can't do this. We can't use this. We can't use that. I already made a complaint to the city clerk's office. Bring back the paper agendas. How am I supposed to memorize these agendas? I mean, you can't do this. You can't do that. This is ridiculous.
Okay, thank you. So anyway, that concludes multi-general public comment for today. Madam Clerk and Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Sadio, you want to make a quick acknowledgement?
Yes, Mr. President, I want to introduce one of Mexico's brightest, youngest new leaders. His name is Mayor Carlos Carillo. He's the mayor of the city of Nayarit. I've had the opportunity during our breaks to visit Nayarit. It's known for its sweet bread, panducah, for its mystical colonial architecture. It's the site of one of Mexico's many volcanoes. And it's also a site where about half of its population, much like Ischia in Italy, half of its population lives in the West Lake area of my district. And so people frequently ask, why are you always visiting? It's because of my interest in immigration, but also my interest in my district. And these are the places that send people to my district. So with that, quiero presentar el gran alcalde de la ciudad de Jala, Carlos Carillo. Bienvenido. Gracias por su presencia.
Bienvenidos. Give him a round of applause. Now, I'd like to recognize Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Martinez. It's good to be welcomed here. It's good. We're very excited today. This is the day that we celebrate the contributions of historically black colleges and universities in the city of Los Angeles. That's an applause line. We...
Go on and stand up. You guys look good. Stand up. Let everybody look at you.
We have all our pretty colors.
Give them another round of applause. Applause.
We got to get in the photo. You got to get in the... This is Los Angeles. You got to be on the picture. On the, you got to be in the shot, as they say. Historically black colleges and universities, while we don't have any in California, they play a very important role to our city and to the nation. Just so folks know, just before the Civil War in the North and after the Civil War in the South, progressive whites and progressive activists and progressive educators set up universities and colleges to educate African-Americans because before the fall of apartheid, most schools would not allow African-Americans to matriculate there. And so over time and over decades, in several states, over a hundred campuses were set up. And even until this day, after the fall of apartheid in the United States, even until this day, we have some shocking data. For African-American women with graduate degrees in sciences, African-American women with graduate degrees in sciences, half of them come from two schools, Spelman College and Bennett University. Two HBCUs that are represented here. Over half of all African-Americans that hold science degrees in the United States, half, fifty-one percent, come from African-American schools. Biology, it's forty-two percent. Computer science is thirty-five percent. Physical science is forty-three percent. Social science is twenty-three percent. In the city of Los Angeles, today, we have represented here twenty-eight of our city departments that run the gamut, representing twenty-four HBCU campuses around the United States. That deserves a big round of applause. Many of them are behind us. We were shocked, the various departments that folks come from and the experiences that they have. We do this for two reasons, Mr. President. We do it because we want to call attention to the contribution that's being made and the service that these institutions are contributing to our city. But also, we want to send the signal to students that are matriculating now. When this picture goes out on the internet and goes back to the universities, we want people to see that Los Angeles is a place you can come to, to make a living, to make a life, and to make a difference in a beautiful city. Our city sends a lot of students there, so we have some people here that they say, well, you know, I didn't go to this university, but my paycheck is going to this university. Because they're sending their, many of our city employees send their children to HBCUs. So today, in addition to honoring all of our city employees that are graduates of HBCUs, we want to call attention to two Angelinos who are making tremendous contributions to our city that come to us from HBCUs. The first, to my right, I'm very pleased to honor on this day, Mr. Drake Dillard. He is a resident of the Eighth Council District. Let's give Mr. Dillard a big round of applause. Drake is a resident of the Eighth Council District. He is a leader among the architecture community here in Los Angeles. He led a design review board. He is an architect at Perkins &amp; Will, and he is the project manager for a project that we're very excited about, that you all will hear more about in the coming days. That is Destination Crenshaw. And so let's give a big round of applause and hear a few words from Mr. Drake Dillard.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Today is very important to me, and to be here, but also it's important to me to see the fellow members of historically black universities behind me. You know, at Howard, as well as other institutions, we try to be examples for our community. We try to make sure that our communities are represented in a positive way. We also want, as an architect, for me, it's important to make sure that we not just talk about downtown or the West Side, but we also talk about South L.A. That's part of our city as well. So that's something that I look forward to working with you and anyone on in the future. But I'd like to acknowledge today, though, people who are important to me, and I wanted to recognize my fraternity brothers from Omega Psi Phi.
And let's give them a mercy applause.
And I also wanted to recognize, of course, my Howard alumni who are here today. A U. And last but least and most important is my lovely wife, Denise.
Yeah, let's give Denise a round of applause.
So, thank you.
You know, Mr. Harris Dawson, you spoke of Destination Crenshaw. It's really kind of cool that Drake and Denise, you guys are here today because we're introducing a motion, Mr. Harris Dawson and I, that will extend that north into the Tenth District as well. So the project, with the passage of this motion, will go from Vernon to the brand-spanking-new Obama Boulevard. So we are expanding that project.
And second, I want to introduce to some of you, but present to most of you, someone that's been a dear mentor to me and helped guide me along the path, that has been an activist in this city for decades and helped us build the kind of environment where we can see things like equity be a main part of all of our discussions. A community activist, a housing developer of some of the most beautiful facilities that you ever want to see, and our representative on the L.A. County Metro Board of Directors, our one and only Jackie Dupont-Walker.
Welcome, Ms. Dupont-Walker.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris Dawson, and to you, President Wesson, and to the entire city council. I thank you for all that you do, and you inspire much of what I do. I am not a slow student, but I actually sang the FAMU Florida A&amp;M University alma mater's fight song for thirteen years, at kindergarten through twelfth grade. I attended the lab school. And then our teacher encouraged several of us to go and desegregate Florida State. And after two and a half grueling years, I went back to Atlanta University, where I had to be made whole. Florida State was tough, not academically, but the atmosphere, where we were not welcome. But we hopefully opened the door, four of us and ten thousand, for other persons of color to come and attend school there. And so I come today honoring Atlanta University, that is now merged, and is now Clark Atlanta University. Thank you to Councilwoman Dawson and staff. I have my A U symbol, and then I want you to know about the Clark A U, which is under here. And then to honor my... And then to honor my sorority. Delta Sigma Theta. But actually, in my family, uh, we celebrate so many of the universities that are called HBCUs. Uh, not only yours, Lincoln, uh, where a son of ours went, but we have Spelman, uh, we have, uh, Tennessee State, uh, we have Hampton, we have Bennett, uh, we have Wilberforce, we have Paul Quinn, we have Edward Waters. All of those, because my family has always encouraged us. What it has done, and now the HBCUs have all of us there, because we understand it's a nurturing environment, started first to give African-Americans an opportunity to get a higher education. But now, it is a nurturing environment for students who didn't quite get it in high school, and those who excelled in high school but don't have the resources to go to some of our other universities. It is the place that we should encourage. And here in Los Angeles, we should encourage the Charles Drew University, the only HBCU here on the west coast. Charles Drew University is ours. So, in addition to embracing all of the schools that are here today, we thank you for honoring this legacy, the people who went before us, and if nothing else, every time we stand and sing, lift every voice and sing. Remember that James Weldon Johnson is a graduate of Atlanta University. And my husband of forty-two years is here with me, Buford Sonny Walker, and I want to acknowledge him as well as the others that I have mentioned-
Let's give Sonny a round of applause. My dear, my dear buddy.
And wherever we can be encouraging everyone to realize their destiny and know what God has called them to do and to step out, we, the alumni of HBCUs, are ready to help any young person or somebody who wants to start a midlife career, go on to the next level. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
You know, Mr. Harris Dawson, before I, before I call on, uh, Mr. Price, uh, you know, maybe we should talk to some of the, the, the universities to see if we can give or get Mr. Price an honorary doctorate. So, when we celebrate next year, Mr. Uh, Price can be as proud of his university as you and I are proud of ours.
I second that, Mr. President.
All right. And the last thing I want to say, I'm, I, it's, you guys have just looked great. So glad to have you here. It makes me think of something that our President Pro Tem, Nury Martinez, always says, which is, if you can see it, you can be it. And by people seeing us, then they know that they can too, they too can become graduates. So, if you can see it, you can be it. With that said, Mr. Price, we're gonna get you a doctorate from, uh, one of these, uh, fine universities.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Dawson, I'm just so excited to join you as we celebrate historically black colleges and universities. I, I, I had a deprived, uh, college, uh, time. I, I went to an historically white college. Uh, but, uh, but certainly, uh, through family and friends, deep roots in historically black colleges, uh, and universities. Uh, in fact, uh, although I didn't attend, I got accepted at Howard. And so, I always hold that as a point of pride. Uh, but excited to, uh, just acknowledge the, the recipients today. We're excited about the Destination Crenshaw. It's gonna be an exciting, uh, opportunity to experience, uh, the, the depth and breadth of, of South LA from, uh, the Eighth District to the Tenth District. Only, sorry, you can't detour through the Ninth. That's another story. Uh, and we're excited, of course, uh, working with Jackie Dupont Walker on a project in the Ninth, Casa de Rosa. It's gonna be a groundbreaking, uh, historical, uh, housing site for veteran women. Uh, and so, we're really excited and proud about that. So, I just want to say again, Mr. Dawson, thank you for, uh, just raising the flag, uh, helping to reacquaint the city family with the, with the kind of resources that are available. We, we frequently hear, we can't find, uh, qualified African-Americans, we can't find this, we can't find that. Well, the historically black colleges are the place to go. And so, uh, I'm, I'm happy to know that our city departments now are beginning to recruit more actively there. Uh, but I just want to take my hats off to those graduates who are with us, who are part of the family, uh, part of our community, making things better. And we know that it's important that we make black history every day. So, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Price.
Members, and another big round of applause for all of the city staff that took time out of their schedule, dawned, got their sweaters, uh, out of the tri- out of the boxes, uh, to come, uh, celebrate, uh, with us today. Another big round of applause for our city staff, for our graduates. And, uh, on behalf of, uh, of the City Council, I want to present a little love, uh, to our honorees today, uh, Mr. Drake Dillard. Here you go. And Ms. Jackie Dupont Walker. Another big round of applause for the two of them.
You know, Mr. Dillard, maybe since, uh, Mr. Price was accepted at Howard, you could make an inquiry to see if we could, if we could get his honorary doctorate from there.
Somebody get Mr. Price's sweater.
One more round of applause. I'd like to recognize Mr. Smith for a very, very special presentation. Mr. Smith, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate the opportunity. Today is a sad day for Council District Twelve and our family, and for this City Council in a way, but a happy day as well. Uh, many years ago, I had an opportunity to serve in this chamber for a guy named Hal Burnson, who sat right over there for twenty-four years. Councilman Burnson is with us today.
Let's give Councilman Burnson a round of applause.
And his beautiful wife, Robin, and daughter, Sarah. When Hal Burnson owned a men's store in Northridge, I also owned a tuxedo shop in Northridge. We were merchants together at the time, and, uh, we got to be very good friends, uh, through political things as well, but we got to be very good friends. And I met his young family, and I was newlywed, and we saw our young family, and his oldest daughter became my babysitter, Nicole Burnson. So, we go back a very long ways. And as she grew and became a young lady, she went into the entertainment industry and then opened her own business and was working in the west side on her own. And in two thousand and three, Hal Burnson decided to retire, I decided to run for the seat. And lo and behold, my babysitter showed up to work in my campaign. Nicole Burnson was there from the very beginning and quickly became a very integral part of my campaign for office. And in two thousand and three, when I was elected, I asked Nicole, would she consider coming to work for me? Which she jumped at the opportunity, because it's in her blood. So, we started off the journey together here in City Hall. She became a senior policy director. During her time here, we wrote a four-hundred-page document called Renew LA, which is the basis of today's zero-waste policy. Our recycling policies are encompassed in that policy. I see Kevin James here, Board of Public Works. There's nobody knows sanitation better than Nicole Burnson. I think she could be the general manager of that department easily, but, uh, that's not where we're going today. But she, uh, just a brilliant young lady, uh, worked on many programs for us, uh, did the Safe Streets Program for Mr. Englander, uh, worked on, uh, the, uh, budget process for me when I was Vice Chair of Budget and Finance. And during our good times, she was brilliant, during our bad times, she was even more brilliant. When we faced the recession in Los Angeles, we were scrambling for ideas. I would sit down with the CLA's office on a daily basis and the CEO, trying to find our way out of going bankrupt, because we were on the verge of bankruptcy. And Nicole Burnson played an integral role in that, dealing with the mayor's office, the CIA, the CLA, on a regular basis to find ways that we could fix these budget crises that we were in. And so, she became known as the budget maven. Uh, when you get the CLA and CEO coming to your office for budget advice, that says something about your staff. So, we had an incredible staff, and Nicole ran that staff. When I left the office in two thousand and eleven, she became Assistant Chief of Staff for Mitch Englander, later Chief of Staff for Mitch Englander. And then, when I inherited the office by a very strange set of circumstances, Nicole Burnson was my Chief of Staff. And I couldn't be happier that she was there to help me, guide me through this process, this extraordinary opportunity that I have, but all of a sudden, extraordinary responsibility that are on my shoulders. And Nicole was the center of that transition for me, helped me get through it. But I said to the staff, and they're here today, that you're in extraordinary circumstances. And if you need to leave, I don't want you to leave, but if you need to, I understand that, because your careers are at the line here. Nicole Burnson came to me and said, "I have an opportunity. I really don't know what to do." She told me, and I didn't even hesitate one second to say, "You need to do that, because it's for your own benefit, for your future, but more importantly, for this city's future." Because she's moving to a position that it continues to serve this city in such an important and vital way. She's been asked to be Assistant General Manager of Department of Finance. And so, today, go ahead, clap. So, today, it is with sorrow that we say goodbye on the fourth floor, but say happy career on the second floor. Nicole Burnson is going to be a General Manager in this city someplace someday. She's one of the most brilliant politicians I've ever met. Sorry, Dad, she's better than you. She is one of the most brilliant policy people I have ever met and a true treasure for the city of LA. So, all of us in CD Twelve are here today to say goodbye, but welcome to your new job. I am pleased to bring up, uh, where's Claire? Claire Bartels is here, Department of Finance, would like to say a few words.
Thank you. It is such an honor to be here today on this most auspicious occasion of offering tribute to a very remarkable woman, Nicole Burnson. Today, in the City Council family, many of you are bidding her a bittersweet goodbye. Sad to see her go, but happy and supportive of her new career. I, on the other hand, am probably one of the happiest people in the room today. Having Nicole join me and my team in the Office of Finance as Assistant Director of Finance is a remarkable thing for all of us and for all of the city family. And my excitement doesn't come purely or solely from the fact that Nicole has many years of experience with the city's budget and the Budget and Finance Committee, nor her vast, uh, array of achievements, but rather for the woman I know Nicole to be and the woman I have known Nicole to be dating back to my time, uh, in the, working on the staff of the City Council. And that is, Nicole is a woman of integrity, something I value greatly on my team. She's also a, has an extraordinary commitment to excellence, and my time is up. She's demonstrated her leadership capabilities, uh, over the years, including leading a cohesive team, something else I value, her, in her commitment to team and to those who serve under her and with her. She is also, has a numerous list of, of achievements, personal and in support of the, um, various council members that she has worked for. And for all that, I'm extremely grateful. But I also wish to express my gratitude to a few other critical people who have, um, played a pivotal role in where we're coming to this point today. Starting first with former Councilman Hal Burnson and his wife, Robin, who clearly brought Nicole into the world and demonstrated, uh, an incredible role model for her and for her future career as a public servant. So, thank you very, very much. Also, to Councilman Smith for running for office for the first time, for inspiring Nicole to first volunteer on the campaign and to pursue a career working for someone and something she genuinely believed in, and for fostering her passion for public service further. And to former Councilman Mitch Englander for leaving office early. Presenting the opportunity for Nicole to consider what may not have been considered before, the possibility of leaving the City Council family for joining a new part of the city family in Office of Finance. And thank you also, I'd like to express my serious gratitude for all of Nicole's colleagues, council staff, and particularly, her team in Council District Twelve, who have supported her, enriched her life over the time that she's been here, and has contributed greatly to the experience that she has gained that has positioned her to be an awesome, dynamic, incredible Assistant Director of Finance with me in the years to come. And one last thank you. Nicole, I want to thank you for saying yes to the position and to officially, on behalf of the entire team of Finance, welcome you to the Office of Finance. Thank you.
When I worked for Councilman Burnson as Chief of Staff, I hired a young college graduate from that other uni- that, what's it called? UCLA, whatever it's called, something over in West LA. Very open-minded. I'm fair, I'm wearing blue today. I, you know, I'm not, I'm not clothes-minded. Uh, but we hired a young intern from UCLA for Planning Deputy, and she became our Planning Deputy eventually. And today, I'm very happy to announce she's my new Chief of Staff, Hannah Lee. Hannah?
Thank you, Councilmen. Council members, um, thanks for the opportunity to say a few words about Nicole on behalf of the staff. So, as you've heard, and as many of you know, if you've met Nicole, you know that she's probably one of the most brilliant people you'll ever meet in your entire life. And that goes without saying. Um, but one of the things, I think, to me, that makes her who she is, is the fact that she's just so passionate about every single thing that she does. And she's passionate about the district that she serves, she's fiercely loyal to the council members that she's worked under and that she's served, and to her friends. And she's, um, just put so much work and effort into delivering for the district and for improving the city. As a Chief of Staff, she's really just been, um, a leader. She cares deeply about the staff, she sets the by- bar high and leads by example. She's really pushed and encouraged each of us to, um, improve ourselves and to shoot for the stars, to improve ourselves professionally, personally, and really to, um, find fulfillment in everything that we do here in the office. Um, she's, she's nudged us out of our comfort zone a couple of times, and that's a good thing. And, um, for me personally, she's been an incredible mentor, and I know she's been that for a lot of the staff as well. So, on behalf of the Council District Twelve team, Nicole, I just want to say how proud we are of you. We wish you well in your new position and continuing to serve the city. You've been an incredible leader to us, and we just couldn't be happier for you. We'll be missing you a lot, but we know you'll be two floors down. I'll be calling you for coffee a lot. Thank you.
And so, we say goodbye to the third and fourth floor for Ms. Burnson, and welcome to the second floor, ladies and gentlemen, our new Assistant General Manager of Finance, Nicole Burnson.
Nicole, did you want to speak first? I have members on the queue. What do you want to do?
Go to the queue.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, it gives me a little bit of pleasure, I'm not gonna lie. We're gonna miss you here on the council, Nicole, but I know that you are gonna be such an incredible resource in the Office of Finance. And, uh, Claire, well played, my friend. I, I couldn't think of a more appropriate appointment for that post. Someone who knows the city as well as you do, someone who works with such a high ethical standard, I have so much respect for you. Your depth of knowledge when it comes to sanitation, well, any issue that you decided to take on, it didn't really matter whether it was in Public Works or whether it was with our city's budget. You are a brilliant, brilliant woman, and I am proud to call you a- You are a brilliant, brilliant woman, and I am proud to call you a friend. I am really excited about the opportunities that we, as a city, are going to benefit from in your new role. Because this is a really critical time, when we talk about all of the resources and energy that need to be focused on our Office of Finance. You are just going to be well-positioned to make an even greater difference in our city. I thank you for all of your years of friendship and, and your work here. I think it's been trailblazing. And, you know, Greg, well done in hiring her. And, you know, again, you have just, you, you are the kind of leader that we really don't do enough to highlight in this city. And, and I'm really grateful to know you and really proud of you. So congratulations on this new world, on this new role for you. Congratulations.
Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you, Madam President. And Mr. Smith, you touched upon Nicole's role with the budget, but I just want to put a little bit of a finer point on it. Because I was asked to become Budget Chair at a time when the city really was teetering on the brink of bankruptcy. And through seven budgets, through that difficult transitional time, changing horses in the middle of the stream, there were very few people in this city that my staff and I relied on more than Nicole in helping to shape the direction that, that we took. And often, through two council members, both Nicole and the council member she represented sometimes took a bit of a contrarian position to others. And that was a very good thing. That's a good thing. Because, because having that tension produced a better work product. And always having to figure out, what's Nicole going to say about this when we present it? Made our work that much better. And I, I think it's, we would not have been able to be as effective in getting this city through the greatest challenge, fiscal challenge it's faced since the Great Depression, without Nicole's steady, sustained leadership as a part of this process. So Nicole, I want to, you know, personally thank you on behalf of myself, my team, but all of the people of Los Angeles who have benefited from the fact that you were there. You know, elected officials come and go. And in Mr. Smith's case, they come and they go and they come again. But, but all of us really depend, to such a great degree, on the professional staff that has the institutional knowledge, that has the memory of things that have been tried and failed and tried again. And Nicole is really, you are the personification of all of that. Not only through your own career, but the fact that you grew up in this building as well makes you really an extraordinary example of the best of what our professional staff is. And, and I know that when you move on to your next role as well, you're going to be great at finding new revenues and being able to collect what we're, what's due us so that our future budgets are going to be even easier. So congratulations on your new position, and thank you from the bottom of my heart for all you've done in the, in the seven budgets that I've been a part of.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President, and Nicole. Congratulations on, on the new move. I wanted to, to rise and somewhat echo what Mr. Kukorian said, but also to, to somewhat rebut it. Because you and I have been involved in budgets for, for years before this, when I was a staff member. And I got to say, the, the tension Mr. Kukorian said made a, a better work product. For me, it made more of a work product. Because you would sit during the annual budget process next to Bill Rosendahl. And I would have briefed him and prepped him on an issue, and I thought he was where I wanted him to be. And all of a sudden, he would call me or text me and say something. I'm like, oh, that damn Nicole. And then I'd have to come back down here, running down from halfway across the building and try to talk him back into, to where he was before. And what was a problem about that is you were always better informed than I was. So it was actually hard to do. And I didn't get him everywhere I wanted all the time. It was tough because I had Greg sitting next to him during council meetings, and then you were sitting next to him during budget. So it was, it was, it was a two-front war. But I, I do want to thank you for that because you, you have been a resource, as Mr. Kukorian said, really not just to the, the council member you were working for, and not just to the Chair. But I know that, that every year, my staff has relied on you and, and your advice. And now that you're moving to another floor, the whole city's going to be relying on it. So that's mostly a good thing. Thanks.
Thank you.
And if I can say a few words, Mr. Smith. Nicole, I just want to say, thank you for being a girl's girl. And thank you for being a mentor to so many of us on the floor. I want to speak on behalf of all the women on the floor who you've mentored, who you've guided, and who you've had a lot of patience for. So thank you very much for being a girl's girl, having our back. And we want to send you off and wish you the very, very, very best, my friend. You are a phenomenal, smart, wonderful person. And I think great things are going to happen for the Department of Finance. And don't forget, Nicole, I think one day, if you choose to, you would be an amazing public servant as an elected official. Congratulations for your amazing work in CD-12. And congratulations, Claire, you're taking a good one. That concludes Members on the Queue.
Today is a very bittersweet day. I'm very excited about the new opportunity, but I'm so grateful for the 15 years that I've had in this chamber. And I've learned so much from everybody here. I have been very lucky to serve two incredible council members, both Greg Smith and Mitch Englander, and now Greg Smith again. And, you know, I had two incredible Chiefs of Staff who really mentored me and promoted me, both Mitch Englander and John Lee. Thank you for coming today. And, you know, this will be the first time in 40 years that there won't be a Burnson in the 12th. And that's a long time. But I'm really looking forward to serving the city and to be able to serve all the members in a slightly larger capacity. And I want to say, there are so many people standing around this horseshoe right now who are support staff to the council, particularly the CLAs. I don't think anybody will ever know how much work and how much heart these people put into the work that they do every single day. I've made incredible friendships here. I've had people who have really gone to the mat for some of the things that we wanted to get done. And, you know, I will always be grateful for the mentorship of Sharon So and Karen Calphayan, among many, many others, my good friend Rafael Prito. And I, I do want to say that staff is very, very important. And to treat staff well, it makes a huge difference. I want to thank especially my dad, both my parents, but especially my dad for being here today. He pulled a Mitch Englander in jeans and no tie. But we're lucky we didn't, he didn't bring the dog, I guess. And I just want to thank you all for the opportunity, and I really look forward to joining the Office of Finance. And Claire, I, I can't wait to be a part of your team. And thank you all very much.
And Mr., Mr. Smith, Mr. Burnson can bring his dog anytime, okay?
And for those who don't know, the dog used to sit here more often than some council members.
Okay, Sergeants, why don't you remove the rope? I've got a Craig on item one.
Hello, council members. This clown. Down in the neighborhood, we don't get all the recognition that Claire get, and all we get is gang violence.
Item one. You signed up Craig to speak on item one. Craig, 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 you signed up. Craig, are you going to speak on item one? You signed up to speak on item one? No, you signed up to speak on item one? No, but, but then how would you know to sign up to speak on item one? So speak on the item. No, no, your time is expired. Then Sergeants, show him his seat. David Evelyn, David Evelyn? Davelet, David Evelyn? You're disrupting, you're disrupting, Craig. Craig, please take your seat. No, you're taking, you're disrupting this meeting. Please take your seat. David, you're on item one?
Ready? Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm here today speaking on behalf of two properties that are adjacent to the applicant site, 118 Car Drive and 1608 East Broadway. We oppose granting this liquor license as it'll bring increased loitering, noise, trash, and crime, especially at night, to an otherwise quiet neighborhood. It'll also make the area less desirable to rent and lower property values. Currently, there are already at least four places to buy liquor in a half-mile radius of this area. And for these reasons, we request that you deny the application for a liquor, a license to sell liquor. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Let's, let's vote on items one, two, and three. On those items, please, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. President, the amending motion for item number 30 has been posted, circulated, and is before council, sir.
Okay, let's vote on that issue. Item 30, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. President, item 7 is available for voting, sir.
Yeah, I'm going to wait till we clear a little bit before we take up item 7.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, could we vote on items nine through 28?
Yes, sir.
So if you would punch those in, items nine through 28. Please, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. President, there are requests to have item 24 as well as 29 go forth with, sir.
So ordered. Okay, let me take up a couple of general public comment cards. We have Roger Wolfson and Lee O'Brien. If you're here, please come forward. Robert, please come on up. Just identify yourself. This is general public comment.
This is Lee O'Brien. I've decided not to comment.
Okay. What about Mr.? Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Roger Wolfson. I'm Commissioner of Animal Services for Los Angeles. I was going to be speaking on behalf of item 5, but I believe that it's not appropriate under the Brown Act for me to comment since it's amended. Okay, I just wanted to say it's nice to be here. Have a nice day.
We're, we're happy to have you here. Patty Shankar, Leslie McCabe.
Good morning, City Council. I'm here for the fur ban, and I just want to say a few things. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Laws may not change the heart, but they can restrain the heartless." And that's what this ordinance will do, restrain the heartless. Animals are not fabric. They are sentient beings who suffer terribly, and we must include them in our moral compass. So I urge you to please vote for the fur ban. And I thank Paul Corretts and Mr. Blumenfeld for bringing it up. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Patty Shankar, Antonio Ramirez. Yes, identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Leslie McCabe with Animal Defenders International. I'm also talking in support of the ban on the sale of manufacture of fur products in the city with thanks to sponsors Blumenfeld, Corretts, and O'Farrell. The fur industry is cruel, it's unnecessary, and it harms the environment. More than 100 million animals are violently killed for their fur every year. We've provided you by prior email data supporting this necessary action, including ADI reports and investigations of this terrible industry. The investigations reveal nightmarish industry standard practices where animals miserable lives in cramped, filthy cages abruptly end by electrocution, suffocation, broken necks, or worse. ADI witnesses foxes struggling as they were dragged from their cages by their tails and hung up by a rope on one foot to be shocked by electrical prods inserted into them. Excuse me, mouths, as other foxes looked on. Fur is not fashion. We urge you to vote yes on the fur ban. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ramirez, general public comment?
Thank you. This morning, I was in the Music Center Grand Park bathroom, block number 4. And while I was by the sink, the same vile, wicked female nigger with a sequins cap came into the bathroom about 9:04 a.m. and wanted to use a dispenser soap where I was. She was aggressive, and she started calling me names, and I ignored her and tried to look for security. And of course, no fucking security. So she was in the bathroom pulling out the toilet paper and rolling it out while it squeaks and flushing the toilet incessantly. That's a way to plug up the toilets. And as she did in block number 1 bathroom by Starbucks. She and her boyfriend sit by the Iron Gate where I used to sit by. Now many violent, wicked, diabolical, and combative niggers, along with the chungo Latino gangbangers, now sit there by the gate to harass me and stalk me and gangstalk me and steal from me. Incidentally, I finally found the stupid security buffoon Officer Tan, who's, who along with Silva, Sandoval, and Garcia, and the interim director of the Music Center Grand Park, Julia Diamond, who failed to provide public safety, were of no avail. They provide no equal protection under the law. They only help the fucking niggas.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Craig, you have your general public comment now.
My name is Craig Jones, and I represent Nature Hotline. I'm just a community constituent over 35 years, maybe 40. I go back to Sidney Thompson, Dan Lawson, way back, Barbara Boudreaux. I've received about 15 plaques and certificates for outstanding citizenship. I worked on the Arthur Pond at the High Park Elementary School. I'm the guy that walked on Brianhurst when they had all the gang murders, and wouldn't nobody go on Brianhurst but I. Everyone else was afraid to go on Brianhurst in the 1990s. I went on Brianhurst. They gave me outstanding citizenship, and I see the same chaotic conditions in the 8th and the 9th District. Hasn't anything changed in 40 years. Same, different monkeys, different monkeys, same show. When she used the word nigger, she's meaning it not in a derogatory way, but in the sense of saying no respect, no respect in the, it looks good, Mr. Harris Dawson. You look real good. You fucking dying out here, man.
Do we have Nancy Campe? Just take your time. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I, I thought that I was going to be speaking on item 5, so I guess it's all general comments.
Just general public comments, so go ahead.
Okay, could you start my clock again?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. When the auto overtook the horse and buggy, horsewhip makers who were smart saw the writing on the wall, "Change or die." They either retired or transformed their businesses into what fit the trend. Right now, a fur-free future is the trend in clothing. A huge number of iconic fashion houses have acknowledged this by changing their business plans and excluding fur in all their products. If LA wants to continue its place as the city that young fashionistas flock to, this council will support the trend towards fur-free fashion. Everyone who's seen the torture behind fur doesn't need persuasion to embrace this new reality. Only short-sighted businesses and some creative types need that persuasion, and I really hope the council gives them this needed push into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the general public comment. Madam Clerk, why don't we take up item 31 at this time? Madam Clerk, why don't we take up item thirty-one at this time? Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
I'd now like to recognize Mr. Rue regarding item seven, I believe. So we will vote on that item now, on item seven. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let us, uh, move to item four.
And, Mr. President, I'd just like to note, in the ordinance that my office transmitted, we misspelled the name of the city Pittsburgh. We left off the H, so without objection, we'll make that technical correction.
I, I don't see any objection. Mr. O'Farrell objects to you correcting the name. Anyway, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mitch O'Farrell rises to speak, not objects. Uh, colleagues, we reached another dubious distinction, uh, in relation to gun violence recently. At the time that I introduced this NRA disclosure motion, in September, there were an average of ninety-six deaths by gun violence every day in the United States. And now that number has risen to one hundred deaths by gun violence across the United States every day. At the time I introduced the motion in September, we were up to one thousand six hundred mass shootings between the incident at Sandy Hook Elementary School in 2012 uh, and September of last year. And in January, just last month, January of 2019, there were twenty-seven mass shootings across the United States. But there is one common denominator in the growing incidences of mass shootings and gun violence across this great country. And that common denominator is the National Rifle Association, the NRA. Here's an example of how out of touch they are. The NRA leadership with polls that show seventy-nine percent of Republicans support um, uh, universal background checks, uh, and that includes sixty-nine percent of NRA members. So we're talking about the distinction between the leadership of the NRA and what they peddle in, which is violence and extremism, and everyday Americans who overwhelmingly support gun safety legislation. They've been a, a roadblock to gun safety at every level of government now for several decades. Most Republicans in Congress are completely beholden to the NRA because of their journey into public office, supported by uh, uh, political activity of the, of the National Rifle Association. Uh, between, um, nineteen ninety-eight and twenty seventeen, in aggregate, there were at least two hundred million dollars that the NRA has spent on political activities. And then in twenty sixteen, of course, they famously spent thirty million dollars, uh, to help, uh, elect Donald Trump. And that money, uh, has mysteriously come from, uh, hi- highly suspected. There's an FBI investigation about the monies that were applied to the campaign of Donald Trump, uh, tied to Russian oligarchs, which of course is illegal in its treasonous. Uh, so, folks, what we have today is a disclosure motion, not unlike the border wall, not unlike slavery, to daylight ties that any company or subsidiary has to the city of Los Angeles. In other words, does business with the city of Los Angeles, to disclose by affidavit this ordinance, uh, any ties that any companies have with the National Rifle Association. And of course, they're threatening a lawsuit under First Amendment rights, but, folks, we have our First Amendment rights as well. And the residents of Los Angeles have a right to know what companies that the city does business with that have ties to this extremist, white, supreme, peddling, um, propaganda organization, uh, has to anyone that we do business with. It's time, once and for all, to call attention to these types of organizations that cause incalculable harm, uh, across the country, uh, and call attention, uh, to their misdeeds. So I ask for your support for this ordinance, the third of its kind in the city, uh, so we can at least get a handle uh, and, and call attention to the violence brought by gun, the use of guns across this country, and an organization that has been a roadblock, uh, for all of these years to sensible gun safety legislation at every level of government. Uh, and with that, over one hundred billion dollars a year across this country, dealing with, uh, a hit to the economy, dealing with the consequences of gun violence. So I, I ask for an eye vote on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise, uh, first of all, to, um, support this measure, but also to thank Mr. O'Farrell, uh, for his leadership in this effort. We have seen time and time again, this city has stood up and taken the lead in the fight against gun violence. Um, long through our history, uh, back even after the Stockton school shooting, it was this council that stood up and, uh, was counted and made a difference in common sense restrictions on gun violence. And time and again, the state has followed us, um, but time and again, we've been stymied in trying to take the leadership that we've, uh, demonstrated here in Los Angeles, uh, to change the national conversation. And it has been a great frustration for all of us who've worked on this issue over the decades, uh, that the national conversation is a non-starter. And the reason it is a non-starter is because so many elected officials in Congress and in state legislatures across this country are completely beholden to one wealthy, focused, passionate organization that will stop any common sense effort, uh, to restrict gun violence, any whatsoever, and that's the National Rifle Association. So this step that we're taking, once again, we're leading. Uh, this isn't a measure that will directly impact anyone's gun ownership or anyone's entitlement to do whatever they'd like. But what it will bring is some transparency. And if anyone feels that they can profit from a relationship with the NRA, then the people of Los Angeles should know about that. And we should have the ability to make decisions about whether we want to do business with companies that feel that they can profit from what the NRA does throughout our country. And, and that's what this motion is about, and I want to thank Mr. O'Farrell for the measured approach. Um, this is really just about transparency. It's about letting people know when a business that does, that wants to contract with the city of Los Angeles feels that it can profit from the very entity that is stopping this country from moving forward in saving lives of children, saving lives of people who are going to church, or going to a nightclub, or going, you know, out to the park. The common sense restrictions that this country has demanded, that the majority of people in this country has demanded for decades, has been stopped by this one organization. And so if people want to support that organization, if people want to profit from that organization, then we have a right to know that. And that's what this motion is about. And so, Mr. O'Farrell, thank you for your leadership. I call for your eye vote.
Well said by the, uh, by the both of you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, let's, uh, take up item five. Mr. Blumenfield, did you kinda wanna set this up?
Yes, thank you.
So the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we made history last September by voting unanimously to let everyone in LA, everyone in the world, know that LA can be the largest city in America to take a stand against the appalling and inhumane treatment of our animals. Today, we can pass the ordinance that follows suit. We directed the city attorney to put the ordinance together. The city attorney has, has, has done that. And my motion, Mr. Corretts's motion, is now going to outlaw the sale and manufacture of fur in the city of Los Angeles. It's already passed the Personal and Animal Welfare Committee, and today we can cross the finish line. Now, since we passed the motion a couple of months ago, uh, to, to direct the city attorney to do this, a couple of things have happened which I wanted to share with you. A number of fashion leaders such as Diane Van Fersenberg and Chanel decided to remove fur from their clothing line. And they join other fashion icons like Michael Kors, Jimmy Choo, Versace, Gucci, already have made the move. And I was just informed, two days ago, none less than, uh, Posh Spice, Victoria Beckham, has also removed it from her, uh, uh, catalog. So it is clear, you can have fashion, you can use faux fur. This does not need to be an issue of fashion. LA will remain, and in fact, I think will be a stronger fashion capital of the world by moving forward with this ban. Now, the other thing is, we, as often is the case in Los Angeles, we do something and it inspires others to do it, and it creates a domino effect. And we're seeing that. After we did our motion to, to move forward to get the city attorney to move, the state of California followed suit and has picked up our language and is doing it. We're seeing this happen time and time again, and that is amazing. These sentient beings are being bred for the skin literally off their back. Gandhi said, "The greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated." Some methods, and I hate to talk about this too much 'cause it's, it's, it's not very pleasant, but include that the furriers are known to use, include removing the, the skin while the animal is still alive to preserve their pelt. Can you imagine the torture that these dogs and raccoons and foxes, rabbits, mink must feel? More than fifty million animals are killed for their fur every year. Animals who are cultivated solely for their fur often spend their lives in cramped cages, subject to deplorable conditions. Common practices include gassing, electrocution, suffocation, neck breaking, electrocuting fur-bearing animals anally. I, I'm not even gonna go into all of this. So let's show that we're that responsible governing body. End this outdated and deplorable practice. The time is long overdue. It is 2019. And for folks who are worried about the, the, the businesses in, in Los Angeles, it's not going to take effect until 2021. So there is plenty of time for folks who need to get rid of their inventory and that kind of thing, and to switch over to humane faux fur. There's plenty of time for that. That'll give the few stores in operation time to sell their inventory and make the switch. I want to thank our supporters. We've got Mark, uh, Ching and Veronica Rafkin of the Animal Hope and Wellness Foundation here, Sherry Shankar, the entire team. Uh, we have Roger Wilson, who's Commissioner on the Board of Animal Services. In fact, we have a lot of supporters. In fact, all the supporters, I know we, public comments satisfied, but just stand up, show that you're here supporting. It's great folks here.
Give them a round of applause.
Uh, and with that, colleagues, I just want to urge your eye vote and, and thank you all for supporting this critical issue.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Blumenfield. You know, just a few minutes ago, Mr. O'Farrell and Mr. Krikorian rose and referenced the effect that the actions that this council has on the rest of this country and the world. Mr. Blumenfield just stood up and indicated the exact same thing. I'm just so proud to be part of a body that does influence things that go on, not only just in this country, but throughout the world. Like I always say, the winds in this country blow from the west to the east, and I'm glad to be sitting here in the west in the greatest city on the planet. Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, uh, a lot of what there is to say has just been said. Uh, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Blumenfield particularly for, uh, uh, taking on most of the leadership on, on this issue. Um, it's about time we end one of the most humane industries in the world. And I think there is no other step that could be taken than the city of Los Angeles, uh, eliminating the fur industry here. Not only because we're watched, but because we do have a lot of the fashion industry. This is the heart of the fashion industry. If we can do it here and we get it and we get a lot of support from the industry itself, it can be done anywhere in the world. And I think ultimately, it will be done everywhere in the world. This is, this is a great first step. It's really exciting. On the same day that we took a great environmental first step and, uh, and the mayor announced, uh, with us that we will not be repowering our gas plants, something that I think will be watched the world over and have a huge impact on climate change. I'm not sure there's anything else we could do that would have more of an impact on animal cruelty. So, uh, I ask you all for your eye vote. Um, I know this will be a great example, and I know we saw films of this in committee. It was hard to take, and it was fortunately limited, but some of the most cruel practices used to obtain furs. And those are the extremes, but even the most humane fur process is not humane, and it's time we end it. And I'm excited that we're gonna do that here today. Thank you, colleagues.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfield, for your leadership on this, and Mr. Corretts, and you, Mr. Wesson, and all of the animal welfare activists among us, uh, and all the welfare, animal welfare activists in the city of Los Angeles that fortify our resolve to take action like this. And I would argue that any industry that utilizes cruelty as part of their bottom line simply needs to change. And if you go back in history until the Endangered Species Act of nineteen seventy-three, whale oil was perfectly legal, but there, they were an endangered species. Whale oil was widely used in the early automotive age. Uh, but we evolved and know and learned that we did not need to use whale oil because we were destroying the animals in the oceans, marine life. Whales were becoming extinct, et cetera. With the consciousness that we have here in 2019, as you said, Mr. Blumenfield, there is no excuse whatsoever anywhere in the world to harvest animals in a cruel and inhumane way. And let, let it be known from this building across the world that we know one thing to be true, and that is when we treat our animals humanely, we in turn become more humane. It's the golden rule. It's just the way it is. And isn't it wonderful that this city can take a leadership role in helping to enlighten the rest of the world that there are other options beside, besides cruelty to animals, to take care of your fashion needs or any other type of need whatsoever? So I wholeheartedly support this, and I'm just proud to serve on this council, uh, with everyone who, um, leads with this, uh, type of well-thought-out, uh, policy that will bring to an end the suffering of animals, which is completely needless. Um, and, um, that will be the legacy of this action, this bold action that we're taking today. And I hope other cities and states follow in quick order. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there are no more speakers. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you would please, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
All right. Next order of business?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted, they're referred. Announcements, members, announcements, any announcements? I don't see any. If we could all rise, all rise for adjourning motions? If all in the council chambers could please rise? If all of our guests could please rise for adjourning motions? I'm looking to my left side's, Mr., uh, Corretts.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, could I do this from the podium?
Yes, yes, you can, Mr. Corretts.
I thought it would be appropriate because I'd like to adjourn in the memory of John Walsh, who probably could have been called the dean of our present-day grassroots watchdogs and critics, otherwise known as gadflies. John's tenure in that role went back to the early nineteen nineties, so several generations of council members felt the wrath of his acid tongue over the years. And he didn't limit his critiques to us, also taking aim at the Board of Supervisors. And he didn't limit his critiques to us, also taking aim at the Board of Supervisors and the Metro Board of Directors when he felt the need. In his zeal to try to help the public understand the workings of government and hold us to account, John at times had inside sources of information and data that no one else had, including reporters. And that fueled many of his critiques and diatribes and made at least some of us sit up and take notice when he lobbed his verbal grenades in our direction. He was known for his rumpled presence and distinctively unkempt plaid jackets. He was a former schoolteacher and a regular activist. If anything, John Walsh did could be called regular. Based in Hollywood for decades, he was a Democratic Party and neighborhood council activist, an incorrigible blogger, and for a number of years, co-host of a cable-access public affairs TV show. He was a fierce advocate on behalf of his community. I don't know anything about other aspects of John Walsh's life, where he was from, whether he had family, or how he came to be one of LA's most irascible community activists. I don't know exactly when John Walsh passed either, but we do know he was found deceased in his Hollywood apartment recently by workers who were undertaking repairs in his building, called for by a systematic code enforcement citation. There's a certain irony to that turn of events. I can't speak for anybody else, but there will be days when I will miss his irreverent attitude and bombast, which nonetheless showed a bit of a level of restraint that isn't always present during public comments around here. And then there will be days when I won't miss it a bit. He'll be blogging at HollywoodHighlands.com, but from another place, and I won't speculate where that is. May John Walsh rest in peace.
And, Mr. Coretts, I hope he, wherever he's transitioned to, that he does find the peace that he could not find here. And it is terrible, and no one should have to pass on alone. And so we adjourn in his honor. I'm still looking, Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much. We have a photo that I want to put up because I think this person is known to a lot of us, especially those of us who are, those who are active in Democratic Party politics. Mr. Kevin L. Brown, a longtime activist in South LA but around Southern California. He passed away this past 30th of January. He was a member of the Crenshaw Church of Christ there in Baldwin Hills, deeply involved in the Crenshaw YMCA. In 2003 is when he began his activism. He was a lead volunteer on the winning campaign for Council District 10. In 2008, he worked on President Obama's campaign, presidential campaign, and went on to be an organizer for healthcare, what we now know as Obamacare. Whenever there was a big cause in Southern California, if you went to a community meeting, if you went to a Democratic Party meeting, you would find Kevin Brown there at the ready, involved in the issue. In 2011, he organized a big trip to Haiti after the earthquake, distributing supplies to over 500 people there. Again, just an imprint on our community that will be deeply, deeply missed. Anytime I walk into a community meeting and I don't hear or see Kevin, his memory will loom large for all of us. May he rest in peace.
I'd like to sign that, yeah, Mr. Price as well. Okay, I'm continuing to look to my left. Now I'm looking to my right, Mr. Krikorian's side, Mr. Smith's side. I don't see any additional adjourning motions, members, this meeting's adjourned.